Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Wednesday, March 8th, 2023. It's half a minute to six, so we're ready to start the Columbus City Council meeting for tonight. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge the allegiance as a body of the United States of America and to the Republic for which I stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would someone make the motion to approve the consent agenda?
So I, excuse me, I move to approve consent agenda items three through five.
And a second?
This is Sue. I'll second.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, starting with Rob.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye. Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jessie, aye. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak at the public open forum? And is there anyone online who would like to speak at the public open forum? All right, we'll move on quickly to number seven. So this is an introduction and present, introduction and presentation from the Anoka County Sheriff's Office. We've got Sheriff Wise with us, Sheriff Lindberg, Deputy Adrian, Deputy Yan Tos. So why don't you guys go ahead? Jessica, you're, you can do the honors.
Mayor, council members, good evening. For those of you who have not met me, I'm Jessica Slavik. I'm a lieutenant at the Anoka County Sheriff's Office, and it's also my pleasure to be the liaison between the Anoka County Sheriff's Office and the city of Columbus. For this evening, I wanted to do a brief presentation and give an overview of some of the law enforcement activities in Columbus since the first of the year. I wanted to highlight a couple notable calls that we've had in the city. And then, of course, my favorite part of the evening is introducing the staff we have here with us today. Since the start of the year, Columbus has had a total of 413 calls for service, which is up 81 more calls than the same time last year. Deputies responded to 11 thefts and zero burglaries. Motor vehicle crashes were down, with deputies responding to a total of 29 crashes, with only three of those having personal injuries. And this is a good number. This is down not only from this time last year, but also significantly lower than the number of crashes from the previous two months of November and December of 2022. So hopefully, we continue seeing that same trend as spring approaches. While on calls for service, deputies made a total of 11 custodial arrests for miscellaneous misdemeanor, gross misdemeanor, and felony charges. And during proactive enforcement, deputies made a total of 218 traffic stops, with those efforts resulting in the issue of 29 traffic citations and one DWI arrest. Any questions regarding the calls for service? Otherwise, I wanted to just highlight a few calls that we've had here in the city.
This is Sue. I just have one question. And we had a couple months ago, we were doing a permit for a new business over off of, would it be Freeway? No.
Hornsby.
Hornsby. And they were talking about that they had heard that the crime in that area was high. And, of course, they had no data to back it up. And so I was just curious if any of your data shows the activity in that area.
Not that I've seen, even when we have like a couple of our thefts, I mean, it's great that there's been no burglaries, no residential burglaries. The majority of the thefts even have either been theft from vehicle, our commercial shoplifting at Love's Truck Stop, and that was even only 11 since the first of the year. So I'll keep my eye out. I know that there were a couple damage to properties of mailboxes, but they seemed unrelated and not even in the area of Hornsby, but I can mostly.
And I have another really basic question. You're probably gonna laugh, but what's the difference between a theft and a burglary?
So a burglary is of an actual residence, like making entry either into a commercial building or a residence, to where a theft would be a shoplifting or taking items out of somebody's vehicle.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
This is Janet. I have a quick question, too. So you said there was 413 calls, or how many of those are calls that you guys get in conjunction with fire calls? Or, I mean, a lot of them, right?
I don't have to pull those numbers. I don't, the 413, I mean, this is a combination of everything from a medical, a traffic accident.
Okay. Because, because I thought I heard you say it was up 81 from last year at the same time?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so when you, you know, kind of add up the thefts and you add up the traffic stops and stuff, there's a huge gap between 413. So that's why I was asking the question, like, what, are the rest of them responses that are in conjunction with, you know, other calls related that usually, you know, fire or EMTs or whatever respond to? Or, just curious.
I don't have the exact numbers, but a lot of those could be medicals. It's my understanding that fire doesn't respond to all medicals. Is that correct? That they're more full arrest?
There's, there's only certain codes that the force like fire responds to, so I don't think that's the, the gap in between.
Okay.
But these calls could be anything from a lift assist to extra patrol, suspicious activity, suspicious vehicle in the area.
Okay, got it. Okay. And maybe you get a lot of those because of all the ring photos that are out there. So I mean, I see that on Nextdoor all the time, like, oh, there's somebody with a hoodie walking across my yard, and call the police, call the sheriff, so maybe.
Yeah, and that's exactly what they should be doing. So, yeah, they're their eyes and the voice, so report anything suspicious and get us in the area to check that.
Yeah, so, okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Thank you, Janet.
I got a question real quick, Jessica. The traffic stops are tied in with the 413 or 411?
They are not.
They're not, separate?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
A quick question. A few weeks back, or maybe even months back, the Columbus School had a suspicious activity there. Whatever, whatever came of that incident, I believe the individual wouldn't show his face, he'd pulled a hat, hood over his head, and then when he was asked to show his face, he did not present his face and ran away. Do we know what came of that?
I'm gonna refer to Deputy Yan Tos.
I know they sent an email out to all the, all the parents.
We just referred each other to that half month ago before we started our shift, and they're like, first of all, that call.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, that was a major concern, so.
This is Sue. I have one more question. So you said that the, the volume was up by 81 from last year. Do you have any idea why? Or, I mean, I know crime is up everywhere a little bit, but Columbus.
Well, the calls for service don't necessarily mean that the calls were crime-related.
Okay.
So it could just be due to increased population, the addition of Love's Truck Stop.
Jessica, maybe you can clarify and make sure that I'm correct. Calls for service is called into 911?
Yes, that's correct.
So that's, that's called, so it can, that can, there's a.
It could be a complaint about a neighbor or something.
There's a lot of variety.
An animal complaint, a suspicious vehicle.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, council member. Anything else? I did want to highlight just a few calls of significance, two of them stemming from Running Aces Casino. On January 25th, deputies responded to Running Aces regarding a male who stole 13 $100 poker chips and then attempted to run out of the, the business. They were able to flee from security, however, they were then detained, he was detained outside by his vehicle. Due to the poker chips totaling a total of $1,300, if he had returned and cashed them in, the male was arrested for felony theft. He indicated that he unfortunately gambled his rent away the day prior and returned to the business in an attempt to remedy that situation. Then on February 20th, Deputy Yan Tos received a call from a female who had earlier been robbed of her cell phone by a male suspect in the city of Wayzata. The female was able to track her cell phone through GPS location, and it showed to be at Running Aces. Deputy Yan Tos obtained a description of the robbery suspect and worked with the staff at the casino to help locate him. That male matching the description was found at a card table. When they approached him, he was uncooperative, and he did give false information and a false name to deputies. The stolen cell phone was found on his person, and he also had a set of car keys in his pocket. That vehicle was located in the parking lot and was learned to be stolen out of Brooklyn Park. The male was arrested and turned over to Wayzata PD for their charges of sexual assault, robbery, and false imprisonment. While in Columbus, he was also picked up some charges of possession of stolen property, obstruction, and falsifying information. And then, of course, the casino followed up with a written trespass notice banning him from Running Aces for a year. Any questions on the two calls from Running Aces? Then on February 26th, we had a assault that occurred at Love's Truck Stop. A female reported that a male had a knife and had been assaulting her. When deputies arrived, they learned that the female was in the semi-cab with her boyfriend, and they were arguing. During that time, he pulled a pocket knife during the argument, and the female sustained cuts to the hand. He was arrested and charged with second degree assault. Otherwise, Love's Truck Stop hasn't had very many calls for service, a couple shopliftings, and there was an opiate overdose in the parking lot, but it was a survivable overdose. So relatively quiet there. Thank you. So that's a quick update. And now move on to introducing the deputies that we have with us tonight. Behind me is Deputy Donna Adrian. Deputy Adrian has been with the Sheriff's Office for three years now. This is her first year working in the city of Columbus. Prior to law enforcement, Deputy Adrian worked at a line of health security for 10 years, both as a security officer and a sergeant, which most certainly equipped her with a lot of valuable skills to become a deputy. She's also a member of our Honor Guard team. She's the mother of four beautiful children and three bonus stepchildren. And during her downtime, Deputy Adrian enjoys building furniture, even a treehouse. She also enjoys running 5Ks and is currently training for a terrain race full of all kinds of obstacles and mud. And then I also have with us tonight Deputy Yan Tos. He's probably a familiar face to many of you. He's been with the Sheriff's Office for 15 years. He started and worked his way up as a CSO, then a detention deputy, and now a licensed deputy. He was a CSO with the city of Columbus for two years, and this is his fourth year as a licensed deputy to the city of Columbus. He is also one of our field training officers, a TASER instructor, and a rifle armorer. He's been married for eight years, and he has four kids, two daughters ages 23 and 16, and two sons ages 6 and 3. He's also a master sergeant with the Minnesota Air National Guard. He has 16 years of military experience with, for deployments. Thank you. I also have Sergeant Andrew Lindberg here. He's one of our eight patrol sergeants, also serves as a shift supervisor for our patrol deputies. He's been with the office for 20 years. He's worked a variety of different positions, including court security deputy, investigator. He's been a sergeant with both our administration and patrol divisions. He's a member of our Honor Guard and also a member of our UAS, our drone program. And Sergeant Lindberg has grew up in and currently lives in Anoka County with his wife and two kids.
Awesome.
And I'd also now like to turn it over to Sheriff Brad Wise.
All right, thanks, Lieutenant Slavik. Yeah, actually, I wanted the opportunity to come introduce myself to you, Mayor, Council. My name is Brad Wise, just selected this, last November, as Sheriff of Anoka County. I thought it would be useful for you to get a little bit of background about me, and then maybe talk a little bit about the future of the Anoka County Sheriff's Office. But I want to say this I do know, because it, obviously, it came up, and you're very concerned about the safety of Columbus, is that you know you live in a very safe place. And we can talk about the statistics of that, but we certainly aim to keep it that way. So me personally, I came, actually, I'll maybe go back a little bit. I grew up, I was born on a farm in western Minnesota, Madison, if, if you know, lack of parole county, right on the South Dakota border. And my folks moved to Coon Rapids when I was 12, and essentially, other than a handful of years in college, I stayed in Coon Rapids. My first career, kind of my accidental career, which was sort of normal back in the 1980s, you just sort of took whatever job came your way, I'm sure that happened to a lot of you, was in hotels. And I worked my way up in hotels and, and became a hotel manager before I decided I wanted to get into law enforcement. And I think it's important because it, it sort of points to a good service history for me, and my background is providing service, customer service, and then transfer, translate that to law enforcement service. But in 1995, when I decided to make that career change, my first job was with the city of Robbinsdale. It was very, very difficult to get a law enforcement job back then. Now, unfortunately, because of forces that are outside of our control, it's actually very, very difficult to find people willing to do the job. And I'm telling you that you're blessed to have the crew that you do work for your city to provide your safety services, because it's a big deal that they're here, they're good people, and I'm very proud of them. But I, I started at Robbinsdale, and a miracle happened, and I was called by my hometown of Coon Rapids. And I became a police officer for the city of Coon Rapids in 1995 and worked my way up until I was appointed police chief in 2011. Then I spent the next 11 years as police chief for the city of Coon Rapids. And I like to say, when I come to these council meetings, I did something like 250 council meetings for the city of Coon Rapids. I attended them all. I've heard everything from zoning and street reconstruction and storm sewers, and you name it, I've been through it all. Bless you for being willing to step up and do that work. I know it's challenging for very little reward, but thank you for, for doing that. That said, we in the Anoka County Sheriff's Office want to make it easy for your city to have good law enforcement service. I have every intention of being responsive to you at any time when something comes up. I know you have great people that are providing the service to your citizens. You talked about the calls for service, like the 400 and some odd calls for service. I'll tell you where I came from. From Coon Rapids last year was 50,000 calls for service. Those are, those are 911 calls. And most often, they're nuisance calls or low-level calls, but they're important to the person who dialed 911. Nobody dials 911 just on whim or whimsy or whatever. But what's different about law enforcement is that people know when they call 911, they're gonna get a response from government within minutes, not days or hours or weeks or whatever it is. I'm sure all of us have been disappointed by some level of government somewhere, whether it's Social Security Administration or whatever. I mean, I'm thinking of my own stuff where I'm dealing with my mom, trying to help her who's in assisted living. But, but we respond in minutes, and, and it's very gratifying, and we like delivering that kind of service for people where they know when they're in trouble and they call 911. Whatever it was is important to them, animal complaint or a crime in progress or something like that. If it's important to them, it's important to us, and that will always be a mantra for this office. So with that, if you have any questions, you want to shoot me, I'm anxious to hear any questions. But otherwise, I'm, I'm easy to find. Like I said, I've never not lived in Anoka County, except for prior to my folks moving there when I was 12. I'm currently in Andover, but I lived in Coon Rapids for a long time, and I've been around a long time. So I stand for any questions, if you have any.
Well, I'm just curious what the difference, or what your, your difference is from being a police chief of Coon Rapids and being the sheriff of the Anoka County Department?
Yeah, the, the primary difference is running a jail, really. And then there are some specialized units, so it's a bigger function. But the patrol services is what we're talking about, providing for the city of Columbus, is what I did for 11 years. And it was literally responding, or being responsive to a city council. So I have every intention of being responsive to you, because that's what I'm used to. It's, well, yeah, it's a separate elected office, but in reality, the contract services that we provide for the cities are bread and butter. It's what we do. So I'd never want to disappoint you, and nor do I want to be unavailable to you for it. But no, it's just a different, it's a different law enforcement approach, I suppose, to, to providing that same function. So it's not a lot of difference, truly. And the police chiefs, there's, there's 10 police chiefs or 10 police departments in Anoka County, plus the Sheriff's Office. All 10 police chiefs are good friends of mine, which is a good thing. They're all mutually supportive, they're willing to help out. If something bad, if a tornado blew through Columbus, I assure you that law enforcement officers from everywhere in Anoka County would respond immediately to try to take care of, of business here in our, in our town. Because, you know, we got things that we have to worry about and pre-plan for, and, you know, we're, we're in Columbus where it's probably quiet, quieter than a lot of other places, but the reality is, is bad things can happen, too. Trains derail, as we see in other places, or tornadoes blow through, or, I don't know, we'll see how the spring thought goes, whether we have localized flooding and those sorts of things. But, long story short, is that we're here to serve.
I did read, maybe it was six months ago or so, that, I don't know if the Anoka County Jail is the oldest one in Minnesota, but they were talking about the funding to redo the jail and a bunch of other facilities and that, that are connected there. Is that all been approved now and planned to move forward?
Well, the county board is planning to move forward on the jail. There's some things to negotiate with the city of Anoka. But yeah, the building as it exists now was built in the early 1980s, and it was built, unfortunately, government had a habit back then of building for what your needs are now and not thinking about the future. And so it was built for a county that had a population of 120,000 people. Now we're at 360,000 people. In 1980, I don't know what the population of Columbus is, but I, or was, but I'm sure it was substantially smaller than it is now. So it's a, it's a old space that's small. There's all sorts of mandates that are required of Anoka County from the state, and a new building is necessitated by that. I mean, it's gonna be a big-ticket item, and no taxpayer wants to pay for something they don't need, but I assure you that it's, it's needed. There's some things to work out, but I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna come together. So it's kind of one of those things, it's really unfortunate that it needs to be done, but it does need to be done. I actually didn't invite you, I'd take any of you on a tour of it if you would like to, so that you could see that it's not just me talking here. And actually, you're kind of bringing up another side point. Kind of the other bonus of me, I think, coming from Coon Rapids, is that Coon Rapids wasn't a tax-rich city. Coon Rapids relied on its citizens for the tax base, there wasn't really much of an industrial base. So every initiative fell hard on homeowners. And I'm just wired to be fiscally conservative, and I want you to know that. It's just, it's my nature of being there, because I knew, I knew the impact of every dollar on the taxpayers of Coon Rapids. My mother was a Coon Rapids taxpayer, now she's in assisted living, like I mentioned in Blaine. I was a Coon Rapids taxpayer. And I want you to know that I'm very mindful of those sort of things, that it's, we're not just gonna spend money for the sake of spending money, people work too hard for it, and, and we gotta be responsible for, for the asks that we do have of our residents.
Thank you.
I got a question. How, how many contracts you got out there? How many?
There's eight, eight contract cities.
Eight cities you're working for, then?
Yep.
So how many men do you have and women on your police, on your Sheriff's Department?
Well, there's 141 licensed deputies. We police roughly 90,000 people, which would make us the largest police department, if you thought of us that way. Blaine would be the second-largest police department with roughly 70,000 citizens there. We have other responsibilities, too, that the sworn staff do, like we provide specialized investigations that are countywide. And taxpayers, like Coon Rapids taxpayers, do pay county taxes that do fund the Sheriff's Office operation. I'm sure you've probably gone through this before when you go through the contract itself. But, so there are other licensed functions, but, but we're a police department, so to speak, of about 90,000 people of those eight contract cities.
Well, I tell you, I'm, I'm very impressed with the burglaries. I, I was really shocked when I looked at some of your stats, and, and I don't know, you know, it can flip on a dime any time, one guy or one person can run their stats straight up.
One person can wreak havoc. You better believe it, yes.
But I want to thank your deputies for the patrol work they're doing, because somebody's stopping it, and it's not coming in our city, so.
Yeah. And I'll tell you this, for the summer, our point of emphasis is going to be traffic enforcement. People are dying on the streets, too many people, you see it every single day, people blowing red lights or driving like lunatics. And we gotta get that genie back in the bottle, and that's gonna be a point of emphasis for the Sheriff's Office for the summer of 2023.
We're forewarned.
Yeah. Yeah. So those of you watching online, please slow down and be mindful of the semaphores.
There you go. This is Janet, I have a question. So I know you're, you're fairly new into this role. What's your vision going forward, and how does it differ from what it was, you know, what the Sheriff's Office was in the past? Or is it pretty consistent with past visions?
It's consistent.
Now you don't have to be in campaign mode, you can just, you can tell us the real, the real story.
No, the, the men and women of that office were bringing it, in my view. I thought it was a top-notch operation. And I'll tell you this, like, we'll, we'll say politically, if Jim Stewart decided he wanted to run another term, I would have never ran. I thought he was doing a phenomenal job. So that he stepped aside was more where I went, oh, I think I have something that I can contribute in that regard. So it'll just be a continuation of that, so like professionalism and, and meeting the needs of the citizens, like being very direct about doing that sort of thing. And, and it's all crime rates and traffic safety, and we're gonna keep those things as low as we possibly can.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Kevin, anybody else?
I would just say, and maybe, maybe it's for Deputy Yan Tos, we had a citizen talking about the roundabout up in, up in, at Broadway and Kettle River there. They were asking about possible upping, watching that area. They said, they said typically, by the time someone comes out of that roundabout heading on Broadway and they get to that graveyard, what was he saying, they're usually doing at least over the speed by that time. And it was, and it was an area of major concern. The only other area, I would say, was, was Howard Lake Drive, and I saw you pull up several people over on Monday out there when I was out snowmobiling, so thank you for that extra patrol over there. That's, it's a bad area in town, so, but, yeah.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Oh, my pleasure.
Yeah, thank you very much, and thank you for your service and your military service also.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Any Wednesday you have nothing to do, you.
Should we excuse ourselves? Are, are you gonna talk now, potholes and?
Don't you want to hang around for that? It's gonna be like old times.
Yeah, hot mix and cold mix and blah, blah, when you, I know the stuff.
A and B tires.
I know the asphalt.
You can be excused. Good evening, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you all.
All right, let's go to the engineer report. Kevin? Engineer report.
Hello.
Wake up, itner.
Sorry, I was relaxing too much here. No report, Mr. Mayor.
Attorneys report.
Mr. Mayor and Council, just kind of a preview of tomorrow's events, day on the hill or day at the Capitol. You have a number of materials in front of you, and these are, you don't need to study up on them, but I hand them out ahead of time, so if you want to take a look, you can. The first item, I, I did a memo with kind of generalized timeframes, and then Grady Harn of our team actually updated that late this afternoon, so we print it out at your seats. So if you wonder why there's two different schedules, one has a little more detail. So the one that should be on the top of your pile, so I know a number of you are gonna go to the League of Minnesota Cities event in the morning. I believe that's at the Doubletree in St. Paul. So we're not far from there, that's south of the Capitol in downtown. Our office, our St. Paul office is north of the Capitol, just a block north of the Senate Office Building. And I mention that because we have free parking, so even if you're at the Doubletree, if you want to come over, park at our office, we can all go over to the Senate Office together. So at 12 o'clock, we're gathering, that's kind of an informal timeframe, there'll be a lunch there for you. And at 12:30, Margaret Fessel, who's our Director of Government Relations, and you've seen before, she's just gonna give you just a general update on the session. It's a different session, because things are moving very rapidly, as I'm sure you've read and heard. Then we'll, about 12:45, we'll walk over to the State Office Building. Hopefully, if it's a nice day, we'll, we'll take the sidewalks, but if not, we'll take the tunnels. Our first, our first potential, we've got two confirmed meetings. Those, of course, are with your Senator Mike Croone and your Representative Nolan West. So those are specific times. Nolan West is at 1:30 in his office in the State Office Building, and Senator Croone is at 3:15, which is kind of handy, because then we can just walk back to our offices. We've got potential sidebar drop buys with Representative Brand, who is sponsoring the bill that I'll mention in this packet. It's $50 million to small cities, which is about a three- or four-time increase in what's ever been funded before. So hopefully, that will have some legs, as they say. So that's a potential kind of walk-by. Other potential meetings are with Senator Jazinski. He's got a bill for permanent trans. He's got a bill for permanent transportation funding. He's in the minority, so he'll need to, his bill will need to find legs with the majority. And there's been positive feedback about permanent funding sources, as I mentioned. Senator Westland, that's an appointment for Elizabeth Merzko to talk about early voting. She's got particular comments on the early voting bill, both positive and corrective. So she'll, we'll pull her aside if, if we can make that happen. And then Senator Morrison is a Democrat in the Senate who we'd like to lead the charge on the $50 million worth of financing for small cities. And so we hope to, to catch up with her. And then finally, I noted the, the meeting with Senator Crean, Croon. So that is the very busy agenda for noon to, noon to 3:00 or a little after 3:00. And then at the end of the day, you can swing by, pick up your cars, and we'll have some refreshments for you before you go. I'm happy to mention that after the deputies are gone. The packet contains a couple of things that we've been using, you know, as we talk to legislators. There's the Minnesota Department of Transportation's two-page discussion of small cities assistance. I think I, you've seen this before, where the funding has been kind of hit and, hit and miss since 2015. So that's really our story that we're telling. One of the key talking points is that we need a reliable funding source. The next item you can, you can note on there, it's now been introduced, it's House File 2600. That's typically on the bill, but this, this was the copy before the bill was introduced. This is just a one-time appropriation. It's important because there's money available, there's people interested in funding small cities' transportation, but this would be, only be a one-time funding. So that's why we're also working on separate legislation for a permanent source, permanent source of funding. The next item is just a simple memo that Representative Jeff Brand, who we may meet with, requested from the legislative analysts. That again indicates the lack of consistency on, on funding for small cities. The next item in your packet is the one that should be interesting to note. This is how the money would be divvied up based on current formulas. If you go, let's see, how many pages in do you have to go? One, two, three, and four, or five? On page five, you'll see, under Anoka County, you'll see Columbus listed and what the potential aid would be if the $50 million is set aside. So it's about three to four times larger than we've seen recently. Now, whether that translates into permanent funding at that amount, that's another question. We keep telling legislators when we meet with them that it's really difficult for small cities to do any kind of planning, when one year you get eight, eight mil, you know, you've got 18 millions divided by how many cities, and the next year you have zero. So that's, that's the 50 million as it would work through the formula, but you can see why that would be important to the city to have that kind of funding, even on a one-time basis. And then the last chunk of paper is how that, how that same type of funding rolled out. And I'm just going to look, how many pages in do we go for Columbus? Columbus was 89,000, and that was in the 2021 appropriation. So you can see what we got most recently. You can see what we might receive as a city, as a small city, if the 50 million is approved. And what we'd like to do is, again, find a way to make that a permanent source. I don't know that it would be at 50 million, but a permanent source would be more predictable than one-time money. So that's the packet for tomorrow. These are the materials we've been using when we meet one-on-one with legislators in the Transportation Committee. The, the typical drill is, you know, you go from office to office, and it's usually about a, you know, a 15 to 20-minute conversation. Your, your representative and your senator will give you more time, will pretty much give you as much time as, as you want until their next appointment. But that's, that's what happens all session long. And some of you have been part of those meetings, and some of, this will be a first time for So we're looking forward to it.
Any questions, anyone?
I have one. We seem to be almost right up to the top, the biggest, the largest amount.
It's a formula. We, I wish I could take credit for that, but it's.
Well, I, I think there's only three other cities that are right up by us.
All right, well, we did that. No, I'm not kidding.
Thank you.
And, and it has a ways to go. So I, I think the, the, just responding generally, there, there's very good reception to the idea of small cities' transportation funding, but it's always in the mix of who's getting what and how much goes to transit, how much goes to roads and so forth. And I think most of the legislators understand, the smaller the city, probably the less transit funding there is, transit opportunity.
So your building, is that, is that the one where, right in affinity in the AGC? Is that yours right there?
It's, if, if you're at the League of Minnesota Cities building, we're on Park also, but we're about a block north of that.
Okay.
It's, it's a very unspectacular building, but it's her, it's our small legislative office, and it's easy to find, and it has free parking. So those, the fact that it's a block from the, from the Senate Office Building is very handy.
Yeah, thank you.
So I'm, I'm just curious, because I haven't done one of these with you guys before. How do you, so when we meet, who talks and what are we talking about? Is it, I mean, clearly, we want to be focused and, and, you know, thoughtful about what we want to say, but we haven't actually talked about this, so help us out.
Well, I think the mayor should be kind of introduce you, introduce the city officials. Elizabeth and I will be in the background because they don't, they don't necessarily want to hear from us. They want to hear from the elected officials, which is appropriate. And then it's really any one of you can talk, but I think the, the mayor could start out and just say, you know, we've been, we've been up at the Capitol before, we've been successful as a city, we've, we received funding along with Anoka County for, and Mindat for the, the bridge reconstruction. You know, I, I will say that when we started that, it was about a $3 million project, and they were going to just kind of repair the two-lane bridge. And I think it was because Anoka County was up there, because the city of Columbus was up there, what you see today got done. And, and I can say that, you're kind of the, the engine, the, the little engine that could, you know? You, you did that. We also had success around, was it a DNR issue?
Pilt money.
Pilt money. And so you've been successful at the legislature. Now, I, I do, I do have the fiscal disparities material in my briefcase, so if anybody wants to talk about that, we can talk about that as well. But one of the reasons we're focusing on small cities' transportation dollars this year is because that has some legs and it can, and it can move. So any one of you can speak, and don't, don't hesitate to do so. I just think as, as a matter of form, it's always nice to have the mayor introduce his elected officials, his team, so to speak, and then, then it's just a free conversation. I think the, what I would say on the small cities' transportation money, a really good example is how long it took for us to do Hornsby, right? I mean, that, that was a project that really was prob, I don't, Jim could answer this, needed 10 years ago, a decade ago, longer.
Longer, but yes.
But, but part of the struggle for all the councils that, that struggled with that is where are we going to find the money? And, you know, we're always, our engineers have always been great at, at finding programs and pockets of money, but it never covers what we need. And I think they need to hear that, that you guys really struggle with the same kind of issues that the bigger cities do, that happen to be over 5,000 population, that happen to get municipal state aid money. And we've got to do it without that consistent funding source. And so they're hearing that over and over again. We have not, we have not activated the grassroots efforts that we would like to with other cities only because these bills have been introduced late. You know, we talked to people, and they're like, they, they think it's a great idea, but then we have to go back and back and back and say, are you going to introduce it? And then we've got to go find the Senate author, even though, you know, the, the representative, you know, really thinks that it's an important goal. So we, we're doing a lot of running around, you know, getting people to drop bills and to find authors on the other side. You know, perhaps that would be easier if we had more cities behind us, but we don't tell, we don't know yet which bills to tell them to support, because the permanent funding has been introduced by Republicans. So they're not in the majority, so they have to rely on friendly Democrats to pick up the bill. So after, after this week's kind of round robin and having you all up there, it's my intent to, to activate the other cities that would benefit. But we had to have, we have to have a consistent story to tell them which bills to support, and are those bills moving in various committees? So we still have, you know, roughly half a session left to go, so we'll, we'll put that to work as well.
Well, in terms of the fiscal disparities, I got the sense that that wasn't going to be a topic we would want to bring up. I personally think it doesn't hurt to just get it on the radar screen, even though there's not a, an ask at this point. I also know, you know, Elizabeth and I talked about this yesterday. She got clarification from Anoka County about those numbers that we weren't quite clear on. So there was some, I think, I don't know, misunderstanding or errors on the table that, that we had and how that related back to the table that had been put together by the state. But the, the gap is shocking. And one of the things that we talked about yesterday, and I don't know, Elizabeth, this is the time to have the, the question, but, you know, I'd really like to have a very compelling case in addition to the huge gap that we're talking about. And so one of the things we spoke about yesterday is whether or not it might make sense to have an analysis done where, you know, you've got the formula that everybody kind of goes, oh, you're never going to understand it. But, you know, we know that, we know that the two things that, that are the inputs are, what is your commercial market value and, and what's your residential? And that's, you know, where we're out of balance and have been for a long time. So my question to Elizabeth is like, if, if we kept our commercial growth the way it was, how many more households would we have to add to Columbus to break even? And if, let's say the number is, I'm making up a number, 2,000. And we have another analysis that was done by the Met Council a few years back that said if you developed every single parcel of upland in Columbus, you could maybe add another 500. So that really illustrates the impossibility of this problem that we, that we can't do anything about. So I, I, I asked Elizabeth yesterday, it's like, who can do that analysis for us? And, you know, she thought it would maybe, did you say Tammy? Tammy, young, Amdal. So I'm curious whether the rest of the council feels like that would be, I mean, obviously, it's not going to be free, but, and whether you feel like that's an important piece of information when we do finally decide that we're going to go and pursue this again.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, I have no qualms about Councilmember Haglund or any council member saying in particular to Senator Croon and Representative West, this has been on our minds, we've introduced bills, this is, you know, the gap keeps getting bigger. And it's, and it's driven by, as you mentioned, population, which is households, which is hard for us to make up as a city. And so there's that disparity, and, and they use similar formulas for LGA. And we have the same kind of problem in getting local government aid. And, and to some extent, this transportation funding is built on the back of the LGA formula. So surprise, surprise, we get any money. But, so I, I don't have any qualms with that. I'm, I'm just telling you that as we, as we get, as we meet with leadership, which is on the other side of the aisle, this is not on the radar. They have no interest in talking about it. We've, we've knocked on their doors, and they've kind of, you know, politely said, not this session. So I think it's a, it's a great thing to continue to build on. Like I said, we've had success up there, so, you know, I'm not saying never. I'm just saying we're focused on transportation funding this year, but bring it up to Senator Croon and Representative West. And we have bills that we can show that we dropped, you know, that, that had some progress.
Do you think that that kind of information would be helpful to our cause? I mean, the other, the other thought I had related to it is if it turns out that, you know, by doing that analysis, and then you could compare that to other cities that are in our, in our same boat, you know, maybe you shrink the number of communities that really have the problem that we have from however many it was when you looked at it before. I don't remember, 200 or something.
And we were getting the lake communities out west.
Yeah, right, right. I mean, you'd probably shrink it down substantially, because I think, I think our situation is unique. So I, I don't know if now is the time to ask whether or not that's a direction we want to give staff to move forward or how anybody else feels about it. I don't know how long something like that would take or what it would cost, but.
Well, so I, I would be in favor of taking a look at that because, I mean, I understand what you're saying, that this is a, this is an issue that's never going to go away for us, and we, the whole funding, every, every category, we, we don't receive money. So I think it's appropriate to mention it tomorrow, and, and then also at least find out how much it would cost to do the survey.
Would it be advisable? So yeah, mention it tomorrow. The reason we're in such a fix, or one of the reasons is, we can never, you know, we're giving away 750,000 a year. That's almost a quarter of our, 20% of our budget. So you can lay that on them and not ask for action, but then should we have them come to a workshop or something after the session's done and throw, doing nothing? Come to a meeting and then have more of these facts that we can sit right there and say, well, you couldn't run your house like this, you couldn't run your city like this. How do you expect us to send in a million dollars a year? We could use it for anything, fix our own roads or have better staff.
Well, I think, and I think the other part of the equation is, you know, one approach, which would not be a good approach, but it would work in our favors, you limit commercial development. I mean, that's not good for anybody, right? But the more we commercially develop, the worse the problem seems to get. And so, you know, I, I, I just, I like to believe that they, we haven't made the right compelling argument. I mean, we've made a compelling argument, but we got to get something that knocks them between their eyes, and they go, oh, my God, oh, yeah, we got to do something about this. Or there's only five other cities that are like you, and it's so, you know, so egregious. We got to figure out, you know, they're not going to mess with the formula, but maybe they can come up with some other solution, as you, you know, kind of put in front of them before. And I don't care where the money comes from, I just want the gap filled, or at least partially filled.
Yeah, I agree. But I think they have to really understand it, and they won't want to hear much of it at all, even our guys. You know, they're both in the minority, so whatever they think, nothing's going to happen. But over the summer, or the fall, or the winter.
Right.
Get them here for a meeting or two and have more facts and figures and really get them understanding.
Or go there with more facts and figures, whatever works. I mean, you guys, you guys know this, you guys know this best, so whatever you think would be the most effective forum.
Yeah, I think the, the challenge, and this is why the transportation funding is kind of front and center, when you have, when you have cities all over the state, under 5,000 similarly situated, we're going to, we, we, we did a whole spreadsheet of Dems and Republicans, and we, there's enough of each that it really lends itself to a bipartisan bill. When you, when you do the same thing with fiscal disparities, the, the reason it doesn't ring the same bell is because these are cities that tend to have more property value than average. So they have higher property value than average, they have commercial, more commercial industrial growth in the, in the years that make sense, and you are one of the few that can't grow your population out of the problem, you know? And so you're, you really are an outlier. And, and we see that. And the other cities that, that, you know, fit into that picture, I mean, one of the best examples was Oak Park Heights. They're very similarly situated in, in terms of the disparity, and they were set to receive quite a bit of funding, you know, under our bill. And yet, the others that we looked at, as we said, are cities that as soon as you mention them, you think of exurbs with very big homes, you know, on Lake Minnetaka, you know? And so it's, it's just, it's a, it's a hard story to sell, but I think we can find a way to sell it. I think the, the idea of having our own, we had to rely on the analysts, the fiscal analysts at the state. You know, those, those weren't our numbers. There were numbers that were given to us, and we had to rely on them. So I think having someone who's reporting to us, who's really doing the deep dive, that and, that allows us to figure out, okay, how can we distinguish Columbus and a few others?
Right.
From this big group of property-rich cities.
Exactly, yep.
Yeah.
So Bill, if somebody said, okay, I'm going to fix your problem, Columbus, where would that money come from? where would that money come from? You know, if they did everything and they got the vote, where would that money? How would they fix it?
Yeah, so, the bill that we introduced two years in a row came from the general fund with reference to the, what used to be called the school district tax. When the state took over funding the schools on the property tax, they shifted that local property tax, the school districts charged, and made it a state tax. So, it comes through the general fund, but it was with reference to that property tax because it was a property tax fix, right? It's based on, fiscal disparities is based on sharing the property value. That doesn't mean, that was the idea for this bill. Again, I think as Councilmember Haglund says, can we recast this? Can we find a different source? For instance, in the transportation, the permanent transportation funding bill, it's tied to the auto parts tax. And so, I don't know if there's a particular tax that we can find that, you know, that adjusts that. Or maybe we do take on the formula. You know, we've been kind of dancing around that. Maybe there's an exception bill that says, yeah, except for if you don't, you know, if there's no, if you look at the Met Council statistics and there's really no way to grow yourself out of the problem.
Right, yep.
Because we end up, you know, we have this deal where we're slow growing on the residential side, but we're really growing fairly rapidly now on the commercial industrial tax base. And that's what's skewing this number.
Which, you know, the state would be happy about, right? The state's happy if you grow your commercial industrial. And we really are very limited through no fault of our own with what we can do with our residential. So, yeah, I think, I mean, if everybody is in favor, I would move that we would direct staff to work with Tammy to get the information to do that type of analysis and any other that she thinks would be helpful to frame the problem.
How about if we find out what it's going to cost first? Can you bring that to the next meeting?
I'll ask her to put a proposal together.
Thank you.
Although we'll have to do it no matter what.
A lot of money, there's a lot of money sifted through our fingers every year.
Well, and they have to listen when you have numbers like we do. You send in a million and you get 250,000 back. I mean, that's worse than going to the card room. And it should get their attention. And then if we're able to back it up with some serious numbers and a way for them to make it happen.
And to pull in, you know, other analyses that have been done by, you know, like the Met Council. I mean, that's obviously not skewed by anything. They would love to see us grow our rooftops, but it's, you can't do much about it when you're 70% wetlands.
So, anyway, all right. So, we meet at your place at noon, right?
At noon or shortly thereafter because the formal presentation isn't until 12:30. I'm just thinking of the folks who are over at the league conference. You've got some time, it's not noon sharp.
And, you know, they just sent an email out saying that they were going to be running buses between the Doubletree and the Capitol. So, is that a reasonable, like, if you took, if you left your car there and took the bus over and then I think they, and then they would bus you back? Or is that still, is that...
It will be easier, if you're driving, it'll be easier for you to re-park at our office because it's a two-level deck, it's free parking, and you can head out of there and catch the freeway.
Okay.
So, I think that, because you're not going to probably want to then take a bus back to downtown St. Paul at the end of the day.
Well, the only reason is if you wanted to go to the reception afterwards.
Oh, sure. And then that works, yeah. We could either meet you at the Senate Office Building for that first appointment or you could go to our office.
Okay. Well, I'll confer with my ride.
All right. Anything else, Bill?
That's it, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
On to number 11, City Council and Mayor's report, Rob.
No report, Mayor.
So, I know that, excuse me, I know that Frank had given a bit of a report from the park board meeting and the work that they're doing on the park master plan. I think the only other thing that maybe he didn't mention was that Anoka County is seeking input on the regional park, Coon Lake Regional Park Plan that they're putting together. And I think, Elizabeth, you have a memo from Karen in front of us for that, right?
So, what I gave everyone is the email that we received from Karen back in January. And Connor put the survey on the website. But I wanted to bring your attention so that if any one of you wanted to go through the link and actually, you know what I mean, take the survey to give feedback on the regional park plan, you could do that. And so, I did email you today so that you could just click on the link instead of typing it in. But this is the original email. So, it's been on the website for quite some time. And now, again, it's voluntary, you don't have to put in. But I do know that overall, when comments are finished on March 17th, which is next Friday, they're going to come back to the city and they're going to look for a resolution of support in moving forward with their plans. So, that is the long term of what Anoka County is going to be looking at.
And I think just to kind of give you a sense of what the master plan, park master plan is kind of looking towards, we're very early in the process. But the park board did a really nice job of communicating to Frank kind of like what their three top priorities are. And so, you know, if you look at other community park master plans, they're, you know, they're like a comp plan. They're thick and lots of information in there and demographics and things like that. And we're not looking to replicate something like that. We're looking to put together a plan that essentially will allow us to, you know, do an inventory of our park assets and put some of the larger items on a replacement schedule, which we haven't done. We do that for other assets that the city has, but we haven't really done that with the park assets. And then be able to budget accordingly for replacement, to think about, you know, five to 10 years in the future and what are the new uses that we might want to be saving our money for or looking for other outside sources of funding to, you know, increase utilization of the park as people's way of recreating changes. And then lastly is to look into ways that we can promote and connect to some of the other assets that are not city assets, but that are around us. So, that might be, you know, the Hardwood Creek Trail. You know, if there's a way that we know that when they upgrade or redo 97, if there's, you know, bike paths or sidewalks or wide shoulders that people could get from, you know, the city park through those channels to get on the Hardwood Creek Trail to ride, that would be, I think, a really helpful thing to do. So, not so much trying to come up with ways that we can physically connect, but that we can identify routes and promote some of the natural assets that surround us that I think most people around here kind of know about, but they don't really know what's there. They don't really know how to use it. They don't really know how to get there, things like that. So, those are kind of the three main priorities that we have. And then clearly, that master plan can be used if grant money is being pursued or, you know, or other sources of dollars are being pursued as well as just for our own city's planning. So, I think it's a really reasonable approach. And the park board's done a great job of thinking about, you know, what makes sense within that context and not, you know, not suggesting things like water parks or splash pads or things like that. It may be realistic and thinking about like, what can our parks offer that people can't get in their own backyard? So, early in the process, but I think they're doing a great job. And they'll also be reaching out and trying to gather more information from our residents, potentially through the newsletter that's going out as well as probably another survey.
I have nothing.
Rob?
I have nothing, thank you.
I have one thing. I went and delivered all my invitations today for Columbus. And I had a really good reception. Everybody was happy it was coming back. They all, or most of them said they were coming. And so, we'll see what happens.
Are we all supposed to give out invitations?
I think there was just an email sent out. If we wanted to or not, we could ask for some.
Connor, I had a pile with my name on them.
Yep, and I had a pile with my name and they got delivered today, too.
I think if you wanted to, you could do some. Or they're being telephoned, emailed and all that.
I know Ron delivered his because he called me from after he got done.
Well, I still got one more. That was because he's an accountant and it's a bad time of the year to talk to accountants.
So, anyway, so, I was pleased with the reception I got. So, that's good.
I think Connor has already got RSVPs back. You all did a good job.
All right, well, that's good. Okay, so, Jim, Public Works.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Connor, Public Communications.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. As Councilmember Haglund did reference, there is a newsletter. I feel like I've, I think I've told you guys about it about a month ago. We are very, very close to getting that sent out. We are waiting on this park board survey that I know Frank is working with the park board on. And then I believe this is when I mentioned it last, is we, most of the council indicated they did want to write a little blurb on the front of that newsletter. I think we still need to get our heads together on what exactly that is. Otherwise, we are all set to get that published. So, I don't know if that's a discussion for this evening or for a workshop. I know I'm kind of springing this on you. But that is one of the last things on us before we can throw her in the mail.
Well, I just have a question because I did not write anything.
No, no one has written anything yet. It would be, it's only about 1,000 characters-ish that I have. So, I don't know if it's something that everyone wants to collaborate on or if we just want to cede responsibilities to one person and everyone gets to be able to edit it. I don't know if you want me to write it, you all edit it, whatever we want to do. But I wanted to, since that's the last thing, one of the last things on our agenda for that, I wanted to bring it to your attention.
Can you share what the other topics are that are in the newsletter? Because I have some ideas, but I bet you probably scooped some of them.
Maybe I did. Currently, there's the park survey, which is going with the truth and taxation explanation. I know that was one of the priorities that we wanted to explain what that paperwork that went out was. We have a little septic reminder on there from the building department. Recycling has a whole, has a half-page section. I'm trying to remember, there's one more big article that I did write up.
Was it Sunrise or something?
Not Sunrise. It was one of the first ones I wrote, so it's been a minute. But those are the things that I know for sure are in the newsletter currently.
Well, are we going to put a little, like, save the date for the Fall Fest? That would be really great if we could add that. That's not my suggestion for the little council corner, but that might suck up a few characters.
Yeah, and that shouldn't be too hard to squeeze on somewhere because I doubt, I mean, at this point, we don't have a whole lot of details, right? So, we could just put a little save the date in a corner just to have somebody.
Yeah, because we know what the date's going to be. And we're having our first organizational meeting on Monday, so, you know...
I mean, if we get any hard details by then, we can see if we need to create more space. But otherwise, that shouldn't be a hard add.
Yeah, okay.
So, Connor, did you want them to talk about tonight? Or do you want them to talk about the workshop next week?
It can be either. I just wanted to make sure it was on people's radar. And if we wanted to delegate that to someone tonight or it can be a full-on discussion Tuesday.
Anybody want a job?
And what's the job again, sorry?
It's a little, it's like 1,000 characters, give or take. Just, I think it'd be an intro from the council or mayor or whoever, detailing the newsletter or just...
So, it's either the mayor message or...
Right, kind of. But we're springing into spring, Columbus is looking forward to warm summer months, that sort of like simple stuff. But if you wanted to tackle a couple items, I think there's enough space to tackle one or two. But it is only 1,000.
Well, we could have a little competition.
Oh, that'd be fun.
No, I wouldn't mind giving it a try, so I'll...
And maybe you can include that in your message, you know, Fall Fest is back. You know what I mean? And if we don't have a date, you know, look for the date or something. I don't know, something catchy.
Okay.
Yeah, I think when I suggested this, I was thinking that, you know, there could be just sort of an update from the council stuff we've been working on, things that they might not have heard or picked up anywhere else. Or, you know, messages that, you know, calls for interested parties to sign up for whatever.
Volunteers. I'm enjoying this.
Yeah, so...
Okay, I'll give it a try.
Okay. And we can meet up offline, too, if we need to hash out some sort of things.
And then Connor, do you have, do you have the schedule for the liaison to the park board since that's coming up? I mean, I know you're done at the end of this month, right?
You're talking about the planning commission?
Did I say park board, I'm sorry. Planning commission? I would say, why is he looking at me so funny? And the only reason I'm saying is because I will put it on my calendar so I make sure that I don't, you know...
Sure.
Wasn't it the second quarter?
I can't remember what I decided on doing. I did take, yes, I have compiled a schedule. And I was, that was going to be one of my final discussions with Elizabeth at some point would be to hammer that out before official distribution to everyone.
Because everybody put their, everybody, you know what I mean, sent back their stuff. And so, we came up with, or Connor's laid out a schedule. We just haven't had a chance to talk about it.
Okay.
Other than those items, I have nothing else further.
I just have one other thing. So, for the next planning commission meeting, I know there was some question yesterday. It is a joint meeting. So, March 15th, which is normally a planning commission meeting, is a joint meeting. And so, we will have the planning commission and council. And at that meeting, the discussion and the primary discussion is the building design standards. So, that's one of the ordinances that were, was the last one that had, there were seven questions and there were still one more question. So, Rob, you're going to be probably up there because you're most familiar with the building standards. And I'm not saying, I'm not talking about building code. I'm talking about building, you know what I mean? Vinegar and, you know what I mean, those sorts of things.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, Dee's going to talk about that and then we're going to try to finalize it. So, I really thought, when I talked to Frank about this, in a joint setting, it would be best because the planning commission, we have a new planning commission who really didn't go through all the early discussions. And then bringing in the council. So, as we did last meeting, we were able to finish the ordinance. We made motions on both, you know, on both entities and we were able to move it forward. So, that's what's on the agenda for the 15th. April 5th is when we have, I want to say it's either two or three or three or four now. There's a fair amount of hearings because now what's happening is there's planning commission applications are starting to come in and we only have 60 days. So, we're trying to, and they're meeting the deadlines for submittals. And so, we're scheduling. So, April will be a busy month, meaning a planning commission busy month. And there, there's one for a dynamic sign. There's public hearings for ordinances. So, there are hearings that are where you would take testimony and other hearings just about ordinances. So, it is a mixed bag between applications and ordinance work. I can't think of anything else on the planning. I just wanted to make sure everybody had dates on their calendar for those meetings.
So, we have a workshop on Tuesday and the joint meeting on Wednesday?
Yes.
And the Wednesday meeting, are we going to ask the planning commission to name their next chair?
Yes, because we thank Ron for being the chairman the first quarter. We're coming to the end of the first quarter and that was his commitment. And so, they will have to self-elect. I have a feeling they're going to look to Ron for some leadership and assistance perhaps on April 5th because it will be a lot of public hearings for a person their first time through.
Yeah, I don't mind. I'll help them out or whatever you want me to do, I'll be there. You want me to run the public hearing until they get used to it?
You know, I think sitting next to them, just because, I think sometimes you get lost, you know, especially your first time when you're, you're... I don't know if any of them have experience. I have not talked to them to say, "Have they ever run a meeting?" But I think it will be, they'll be a little nervous and obviously, we have hearings that we need to get through. So, that would be most appreciated.
Mr. Mayor and Council, so your role would be as liaison in that meeting, something like a liaison, because your appointment ends at the end of March.
Okay.
So you won't be a Planning Commission member, but I'm sure they'd be happy to look over and say, what do we do next?
Well, I got a template on it, anyway. I just, somehow I'll get it to whoever gets elected.
And if you're, if the actual liaison is Councilmember Haglund, for instance, in the second quarter, then you wouldn't be liaison, you'd just be a helpful council member. So it doesn't really matter, you'll be helpful just by your presence.
You can be the man behind the curtain.
Man behind the curtain?
Like in The Wizard of Oz.
Got to get a curtain, then.
See Administrator, run the allocations.
I did not have a chance to run numbers for the allocation of dollars from the Running Aces sale, land sale. However, I'm going to give you a preview of where I think the money is going to be needed. I think I sent all of you the email when our, one of our emails got hacked and some things that we had to put in place in order to clean the system, our email system. And when we went through that incident response, or when we had the incident response team look at our email and some things, they made a plan for us, which was very nice. So we had immediate needs, meaning you have to do this.
Recording in progress. Oh, that's weird.
Okay, I thought the recording was in process the whole time. So what he did was, he said, here's your immediate needs, meaning when I was on the phone with him and we were doing our things in the two days, this is what you must do right now, which we did. And the following day, we had IT support for five hours. And they went through and we changed all our passwords, and we did what we absolutely needed to do. Then there were things that you should really do in the next 30 days, and these are the things that you need to do. And he gave me a list of those things. And then he said, in the long term, you really need to do this. And so he's outlined them for me now, and unfortunately, there is not one thing on his list that is for free. So, and to give you an example, you know, there are trainings you can do for cybersecurity where you hire a firm and they go through the training, they send you emails, you take a quiz, and those sorts of things. Well, it's a subscription service, it's not for free, you don't sign up for that. And the league sponsors three different programs. I asked Bill, his office has a program, and it's standard training. We don't have it today, and we should probably have it in place that we're training all of our staff for acknowledging what phishing looks like. And I think in this case, the council will be included because you're in our Office 365, you know what I mean, umbrella. Some of the other things that he wanted us, the type of program we have for Office 365, he feels is we should get the next level of security up. And he said now all cities are going to level five, we should really be at level five versus level three. And then lastly, he wanted me to do what he called a system health check, which means you go into the background of programming and you actually click on different boxes, like what are all the rules you want to set, what things don't you want? And one of the first things he said to me is, Elizabeth, you really need to stop any international email getting into your system, just block them all. And I don't know how to do that. So I need someone to help me, you know what I mean, go into the background and do those sorts of things. So, and again, the hours someone would spend with me in order to do that, because they won't do it for you, they take you through it, you know, you were on the computer at the same time because I'm the administrator on the program, but they take you through, it's an hourly cost. So they charge you to do that. So I think that when it comes down to it, some of the money I will ask to address the cybersecurity and upgrade for licensing and two-factor security. Right now, we only have one, we're just complex password protected, and I didn't say that on the, but again, those things that most cities now is standard. And lastly, we need to, we have a backup system, we're doing well, but now cities do triple backups. So there's some things that now is just standard that for a small city, you would think, you wouldn't have to do those things, but as they explained to me, because we're a small city and we don't have a full-time IT staff, you almost need to go a little beyond what others is because we're not, it's not that we're not monitoring, but we don't have people that are looking at this every single day. So, learned a lot in my 48 hours of cleaning up. So while it was interesting and everything else, it somewhat makes me a little frustrated because I spent an awful lot of time on that, what I could have been doing, some other things. So it's really frustrating in big picture that we have to kind of address these types of things, and we have to spend a lot of time and money on this. But it is what it is, and there's nothing that we can do to completely stop it.
So what's your next steps, Elizabeth? I mean, it could be hacked tonight, right? Again, so the sooner you start in, the better?
And that's why he set up a plan, immediate plan, 30-day plan, long-term plan. I mean, that's exactly why he set up the plan, you know? It's now, it's just having the money to do all of that. So I will set up the plan in the workshop next week, we'll kind of go over what we need to do and the money that I need to do it, and we'll move forward. And I will say, we weren't the only one, you know, Lynwood had a problem, Nowland had a problem, we did, Andover. I mean, it wasn't, it's not unique to, you know what I mean, it's just one of those things that if you fall for whatever scheme they got going, you, you know what I mean, you have to address it. And in this case, he told me it was, it was not malicious malware. Download, it was more for information, because as they gather information, they look for ways to get money. And in this case, that's what they were phishing for. They were, in this particular case, he knew of, they intercept your invoices, and so instead of paying, let me think, instead of the vendor thinking they paid Columbus, they're paying this other entity because they use our bills, and then they send it somewhere else, and they send it to the other person, and they think they paid Columbus and they didn't. So it's, you know what I mean, it's things I would never think about, but apparently lots of others have thought about it.
Yeah, it's crazy right now, too, right? I mean, even like City of Minneapolis and, or Minneapolis Schools is what I was thinking, theirs is held for ransom right now. I mean, their whole system's hijacked, and their only way to get out of it's to pay at this point. There's people that aren't getting their paychecks and things like that, it's a bad deal. So with that two-part authenticity deal, is there any idea off the top of your head with that cost to implement?
I haven't looked at any.
No, it's definitely a pain in the, you know what, to work with.
You know, I haven't looked into it, but I got to tell you, everything that, whether I do banking, whether I do anything now, it's all two-factor everything. As a matter of fact, the bank is like triple, you know what I mean? So I have been able to use it, and I know that I talked to Cheryl, and she said that really any banking information and numbers should be by secure email, and we don't, we are not signed up with like NICS or any of those types, but I think we've all received those, you know what I mean, where their emails are coming secure, because you're either dealing with private information or things that you want to do. So another thing that's on the list that we'll have to also embark on.
Do they know how this hacker got access? I mean, I know you get, you know, we all get those emails, and you know that they're not from me or Priner or whoever. I mean, was it the usual, you got an email, somebody clicked on it, and that's how they got in? Or did they come in the back way, or how did they get in?
He couldn't figure out how they got in, but they got into an email, and they were using a valid city email. And that's why people were trying to open it, which led to them being able to get into that system, which is why I think it went from one city to the next, because I think they were, you know, they were able to open emails and get into the system in each one of those cities. And luckily for us, we were able to stop it pretty quickly. Anoka County stopped it immediately and then erased all the emails. They got 11 of them, and so they immediately, but they had someone monitoring it, and so they shut it down very quickly and then deleted all the emails. So I'm not sure how this one, I'm not sure how this person got into the system, because Jim wasn't here, and Ella told me that she did open it, but she said that it wasn't successful, so I'm not really sure exactly what happened. And neither can the person that I hired tell me that. So we, in our investigation, we didn't go down that road, we went down the road of cleaning it all up and getting them out of our system and changing all passwords. He did tell me, though, and I actually saw it, in my email in the background, you do see other countries trying to hack into my email. And you can see it, because I, we got into the background and I said, I said, what is all of this? I mean, this, I said, I don't even, what is this language and who is this? And he's like, oh, these are all from Russia, and these are, you know, these are the ones from Buffalo, and these, and I was like, you know, because they all said failed and unsuccessful in trying to get into my email. So he said that, so that's why he said I needed to block all other countries. And we don't deal with other countries, so that's simple, I just don't know how to do So I probably didn't need all that whole lesson, but I, it was, there was a lot of steps to this one.
When you get your info for our workshop, I guess, just tell us how much it's going to cost. Because you really can't go on without it, right? Or you'll have the same problem today or tomorrow or next week.
Well, you know, just from Minneapolis and others, they can, they can shut you down.
Yeah. Any more good news?
No more good, no more good news.
Well, thank you for doing all the extra work.
You're welcome.
And, sorry, but if we can get this in place, maybe that'll be the end of it, until they figure out how to go around that. All right, so on to announcements and reminders. City on the Hill tomorrow, City Council Workshop on the 14th at 6:00. City Council and Planning Commission meeting on the 15th at 6:00. Columbus, which is coming up quickly, 8 o'clock on the 23rd, I think that's Thursday. And the whole calendar's on the back.
So, quick question here, on the calendar that we got here, it's saying the workshops at 5:30 on the 14th, but this one here is saying 6 o'clock.
You know, the workshop is.
Is it 5:30?
The workshop is 5:30, yep.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt there.
All right. So, are we all done, everybody? All make the motion to adjourn, is there a second?
This is Sue, I'll second.
I'll call for the vote. Rob, aye.
Janet, aye. Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
Jesse, aye. Our meeting is adjourned.